I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
I'll say a prayer for. Heavenly Father, we just ask for your blessings tonight, Lord, and how we direct the business of this town, Lord, we just ask for your guidance and wisdom. We give all the honor to you in Jesus's name, amen. Just line of business, approval of minutes, flame docket, utility adjustments. I think that's, uh, I think you're missing that meeting, weren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your lives.
Okay, so. Take the motion.
Make the motion, we approve the minutes and the docket, the utility adjustments that presented.
Any questions about anything we've done? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
I'm over that.
Okay. Ryan, please.
Uh, for the month of October, we had two hundred and forty-nine calls for service. I believe Sandra gave you guys a letter to consider tonight. And that's about it.
Jason.
October courses after the festival month, we got everything put out, put back and cleaned up from it. We did, uh, in October get notification that we passed our third month in our old wet test, which was I D M requirement since we had failed one earlier. And Jeff has emailed I D M awaiting what our instructions are on our new testing timeline for when we have to redo that again, since we've done three in the last three months. It's, I know it will be sometime in the calendar year twenty-six, but don't know if that would be the second quarter, third quarter test. We did get the leaf machine out today, picked up a little and a half leads, kind of trying everything out, making sure everything was good with it. I've had both internationals serviced so that they're ready for the yellow international we use during leaf season, but so that both trucks are ready for snow season that is going to be approaching sometime soon. Hopefully later than sooner, but and I had to have, I had to pull a pump from lift station at the trailer court last Friday, the last Thursday or Friday, I don't remember which day. We pulled it out to clean the debris out of it because it was drawing too much amperage and tripping out the overload. And while we had it out, after we cleaned it out, when sparks came out of the bottom of the pump, I said, yeah, it's time to rip it first on. So I, um, met salesman from Indiana Pump Works in Bloomington yesterday to get it taken in for repair quicker than he said he wouldn't be able to make it out, out here until Thursday or Friday this week to actually pick it up. So I was like, I'll meet you somewhere. And we also had to have McAllister come out and service generator, or at least troubleshoot generator at the waste treatment plant. It tripped an alarm and would not auto start and test run. So they've been out to do that and found just some basically dirt and dust on the wrist that was causing it to trip. But we are going to have to have service done on the generator sometime soon. And.
How old is that?
As old as the plant, two thousand, is it two thousand or two thousand and one?
It is two thousand.
Dave had to get a price on the replacement, I think it was two years ago, it was, if I remember correctly, it was around eighty-five, ninety thousand dollars for a replacement generator if we had to replace that generator.
Eighty-five and ninety thousand?
I, I believe that's correct. I wouldn't hold me firm on those numbers. It's been, it's been a while since I got that quote.
All right. Randy?
We had A D M A runs at one far run and Kevin's supposed to start this month sometime on the infirmers.
Nobody's here for the pool or the parks, so. It's going down the line. We are not probably prepared for any of them necessarily. I was thinking maybe if we agree on this date, who wants to set any to set some time for that, discuss that.
Yeah.
Do that now? Oh, wait, well, we can, yeah, we can wait and cheat it over this and then we can, what's that?
I've got some comments that I'd like at some point, I mean, we talk about these, I'd like to make a couple of comments about that might help further, further along with this.
We can talk after meeting on it and then figure out what we want to talk about that date, if we didn't agree on this date. Run them out, we can, we can hash it out and let's just get that done or whatever we're gonna do, so.
On the seventeenth?
Yeah. You put a note on here, is that still good for you?
If, and whatever kind of works for you guys.
Are you done for me, I think?
One to nine, maybe, or, or earlier or later? Earliest by, I mean, not early like early nine, but if we wanted to do eight, we could, I'm not thinking like six or seven.
There's no big care, there's no big care to where you're at.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Well, I'll do it anytime.
Oh, oh, wait a minute. I said anytime.
Her, her travel time.
I thought I'd do it either after. I'm sorry.
One thirty?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was that, Greg?
One thirty?
One thirty.
Okay. And if there's any questions, we want to probably make sure and talk to Sam tonight, I can read a little bit about those questions if you have anything. This is regarding the tornado sirens and disaster plan that we're going to kind of try to put together. Get some maybe guidance on that, so.
And you do that here or at the town council?
We do that here.
Here.
And Sandra set up that date. Okay, so new business, Rick Anderson. How are you doing?
That's great. How are you, great?
Not bad.
So, good evening, gentlemen and ladies. So, Rick Anderson, Energy, I was here a couple of months back. We, uh, we, uh, we are in the energy conservation business. Uh, we, I think, if you guys remember my, uh, my back to the spiel, um, what we're trying to help you guys do is, is not only reduce your operating costs, energy and operational costs, but also your infrastructure improvements. So, we did an assessment for you, my engineer, development engineer, Tim, is with me and appreciate Jason was, uh, was kind enough to walk us around and kind of give us all the details of, you know, what you guys have and what you've been working on. So, if you look at the, the front page, um, you know, our objective with, with our projects is collaborate with the town of Lynnfield, develop energy conservation measures that decrease energy usage, produce sustainable energy, reduce utility costs, and provide substantial benefits to the buildings and community. The project highlights, uh, the scope conclusions that we, that we came up with here were wastewater, solar, uh, P V array there. This building had quite a few things that were, had some opportunities. So the, the, there's a furnace and condensing unit that were two thousand and two, it's got old R twenty-two refrigerant. There's a radiant heater op- opportunity, uh, I don't know if you guys have ever seen radiant heat in garages, but it's a much better heat, much more efficient heat. Uh, those blocks, it's basically just blow out, radiant heat basically, uh, comes down and heats a lot more of the surface and area. Windows in here, um, are older, need replacement, and then also, uh, the roof as well is older and probably needs replacement. So, um, the benefits avoid rising utility costs and gain more independence from the utility companies. As we talked about before, you know, the average rate increase in the state, um, done like six percent over the past fifteen years, but, but lately, it's been more like fifteen, eighteen, twenty percent. If you guys have paid a bill in a business or at home, you've seen the rising costs, that's just gonna keep getting worse. We try to improve comfort and reduce energy at your core facilities, eliminate the use of R twenty-two refrigerant, and then, um, utilize lower natural gas costs for heat routed electricity where we could do that. We, there's some other opportunities too, we were walking around with Jason, uh, you know, you've got that old garage that's sitting behind the, the, uh, the town building up, uh.
The old fire station.
The old fire station. And then you also have a, uh, I guess your, I guess what you call your highway garage with some, uh, some, some things in that. You know, there's, there's some property, I guess, down at the wastewater treatment plant that you could potentially build, build a new structure. So there's something called, I don't know if you guys ever heard about, uh, B O T, uh, build, operate, transfer, but it's a way to, to, uh, to work on a project and build a new building and as far as being in these projects as well. There's some also some, some, uh, some maintenance slash, you know, necessary things down to wastewater treatment plant, fresh aerators and disc aerators, replacement of positive displacement blowers and turbo blowers, um, those are, those are in here as well. So, if you looked at the, on the first page, if you looked at the, the right-hand, uh, part of that, um, we're gonna be looking at maybe offsetting for almost forty percent of your, of your wastewater treatment and electricity. So, you know, if you look at your bills, that's probably seventy-five or eighty percent of your, of your total usage. And we potentially, uh, with the solar array down there can offset almost forty percent of that usage. So that's, that's probably the biggest bang for your buck. There's a total project cost of eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, twenty years of avoided costs, um, you know, almost a million, nine sixty-eight. There is a, so I've given you a, an explanation, um, if you look back through here, there's an explanation of everything that we just kind of talked about. Basically, you know, it gets into the detail of exactly the things we're talking about. What we did for you here is, I, I call this kind of everything but the kitchen sink, you know, we, we basically went around all your, all your, all your buildings and tried to focus on things that were, again, energy and operational savings, but it's also infrastructure improvement as well. So if you're committed to, as I say, keeping the bricks and sticks, um, every, you know, fifteen, twenty years, you need to upgrade things. So I think you're starting to see some of those things down at the wastewater plant where that's, you know, but I think you, you built that in early two thousands, so, you know, you're coming up on twenty-five years down there. But in some of these other buildings that are, that are older, um, they just need, they just need infrastructure improvements. What we talked about was there's guaranteed savings legislation, the state allows you guys to go out and do these projects, be an R F Q or R F P. You know, typically, if you went to do these, these individual projects, you hire, you have to hire an architect or engineer, you put plans and specs together. You take a little bid and you have change orders. The nice part about the guaranteed savings legislation, it's a no change order situation. So, if we came up with a project for you, um, that, you know, we don't come to you and say, ah, you forgot something, that's an extra twenty grand or whatever else, that's, that's the cost. And if there is any change orders, it would come from, from the customer saying, well, I know I talked about this, but I'd rather have this, if that makes sense. Uh, it's, this is a different way to buy, guys, it's, it's, you know, again, if you, if you hire, you guys, I'm sure have hired architects or engineers to come and work for you, they don't work for free. You know, so the, the assessment that we've done is, is no cost to you guys to start, but our whole process, everybody says, well, how do you guys make your money? We make our money acting as a general contractor for you and basically making these projects more plausible for you to stomach. Uh, there's a cash flow on the back page here that basically details, um, everything that I talked about. Talks about costs, savings, and it shows you how a, how a project would work out. You can take, the legislation allows you to go twenty years, um, to do these projects. So this really gives you a good cash flow on, on, on everything. Uh, the other thing I forgot to mention, uh, which I talked about before, the Disinflation Reduction Act that we talked about that was enacted back in twenty-two. It's still available, but we're kind of running out of time here. So, uh, the solar, you'll see that, if you looked on year one, that hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, that's potentially what we can get you guys back, um, in the form of a check from the federal government on the solar piece. That's a nice carrot, but that, that's unfortunately going away here sometime in twenty-six, but if we can get moving on something, uh, there's a, there's a possibility that we can get you that money.
Were you heading down to anybody else that would be like for drinks or anything for this?
It's funny, yes, um, I, I was just at the AIM show, uh, two weeks ago, I, I was, I tried to do work with a little town called Austin, uh, Indiana. They work with a company that got a, uh, U S T A grant, it took them four years to get the thing done. So it's, there's, some of that stuff's out there, um, and we certainly try to find that if we can. But, um, really this, this Inflation Reduction Act thing is really the, it's the big carrot right now and, um, the rising utility costs. I mean, what we're really trying to help you guys do is be energy dependent, or as energy dependent as you can, you're never gonna be able to totally get off the utility company, but, um, we're trying to help you get off of them as much as you can. You know, Duke, it's kind of funny, I was at a meeting someplace and somebody had gotten a check from Duke for like eight thousand dollars and they said, well, what's it for? I'm like, we don't know. And, um, once, is it expired? And they're like, we're not sure. And, you know, Duke's always throwing some money out in the community, but I would, I also asked a question, have they offered to reduce your utility costs? And they're like, they kind of look at me like I got three heads, so, um, that's not happening. So what we're trying to help you do here, guys, is really, you know, reduce your costs from a utility perspective, um, energy and operational, and upgrade your infrastructure. So it's a lot to digest, I know, um, you know, a lot of times, like I said, I, I gave you everything but the kitchen sink, but, um, oh, the other thing I forgot to mention too, you have, um, Duke, uh, streetlights throughout the community, um, you've upgraded approximately, according to this, about twenty-five percent maybe. That's a huge savings. So, you know, guys, if you were gonna do something that was gonna offset as the, the most that you could offset, the solar, the wastewater, and the streetlights would be a really nice little project. That'd kind of be the best, you know, best savings.
Sure, uh, streetlights, were they converted into L E Ds?
Yeah, we would, if it would be solar streetlights, it'd be, you basically take the covers and you, you have some flat in the community, so we're basically going to a, a flat, uh, L E D, uh, light for us.
Duke has been as calling for repairs if, if a light is, I don't know what their percentage of life is or something, what their determining quote it is, but some of them, rather than repair the existing light, they are installing new L E D fixtures as we call them for repairs. Sometimes it's, you know, just a photocell or maybe a light bulb, but if it's much more than that, they're replacing with L E D fixtures.
But they only do them when they go out, this is a full-scale replacement, so it gets them all done and gets you the savings.
Our church is doing that when, uh, the, uh, what's the name, thing in the light fixture?
Ballast.
When the ballast goes out, we convert it to, we take the ballast out and
Right.
convert it to L E Ds and, yep. Which is a good idea.
So it's a lot to digest, I know, but, uh.
So even fully powering, they're just gonna be used as an offset, basically.
What are you talking about?
Like overall power, energy or power usage, like from Duke or anybody, these are just gonna offset things, they're not gonna fully power everything, because you're gonna have, these are basically solar panels, right?
Correct.
And some of the things getting replaced, I, um, just a question, I guess, some of the things that are replaced, are they compatible just for the solar panel or is that how, how it works or?
Are you asking, uh, here at the fire station or?
Yeah, like for here, like, uh, does everything kind of integrate in with the solar panel or, or does it still, it's still run electric, of course, but.
Yeah, so, um.
Make sure it's compatible ways?
Yeah, so there, there, there wouldn't be any, any worry about compatibility, it's just, it's just grouped in the, in the same project, but it would be, it would be separate in terms of, yeah, yeah. Uh, actually, here at the, um, here at the fire station, um, a lot of your, I, I, I believe some of your heating is actually done by, done, it is powered by electricity. And, uh, one of, and our, our two measures there through the radiant heat and the, um, and the furnace replacement, um, both of those would, well, the furnace, I believe I was quoting just, uh, standard, uh, electric, electric, but then for the, uh, for the garage, we're replacing it with gas, and the gas is much cheaper right now.
But really, the solar, what impact of wastewater plant, the solar is, we're talking about impacts just down.
Um, when you, what I'm, I'm guessing you're wondering about is the, I had that note about not including the solar here at the fire station because of the measures, and that was just because, because we were reducing the electricity so much through the other, through the other measures that I didn't want to include the solar on top of it. It didn't make sense to offset what you guys were already offsetting essentially.
But each, each thing is individual, and then, then we put the act, this, the casual engagements and that, we get all the facilities together.
Definitely some good ideas in here, things that need to be up there.
Yeah, so again, lots of digest, um, you know, feel free to, to, uh, you know, I think Jason, uh, walking around, uh, you know, knows, like, you have, you have a good person here as far as knowing, knowledgeable, so, um, he can give you a lot of ideas on, does this make sense or not? But really, what we've really tried to focus on is the things that, you know, really needed, needed to be addressed, so.
Something going or seventeenth meeting, we can discuss it for a minute, and now we've got some good stuff here.
Yeah, if you'd like us to, happy to come back and, you know, a lot of times, these things don't happen, you know, overnight, so a lot of times it takes a, a few meetings to really kind of hone in on. So again, if you wanted to take out of there, as I suggested, you know, maybe your solar down there, uh, maybe some of these, um, wastewater items that you're gonna have to do anyway. And then these streetlights, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of a project that might impact you the best. But happy to come back and work through with you. Uh, we've done a lot of similar projects, I'm happy to get you, you know, I consider all day and tell you how great we are. If you'd like to call a few communities that we've done some projects with, the town of Brownstown, uh, Indiana, we did a very similar solar and, um, street lighting project. I'm finishing up a project at the town of Brazil, uh, city of Brazil, I'm sorry, um, wastewater, solar, and street lighting there as well, and that's fairly close. But happy to get you in touch with, you know, some of the communities that have done this and how they did it now it's worked out.
We appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you.
And do you have any questions here? I don't know. We're informed, we're good.
Yeah, you guys, uh, got my information down here, my numbers down there, so if you have any questions.
Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jenny?
All right. So we have, uh, finelking for the housing project, and we have only seven contractors eligible, and we received bids from three companies. So I will just go ahead and open them, make sure everything's turned in, and then we'll read through bids. Okay, this is from Brock Anderson Construction, who has turned in the application, notarized non collusion affidavit. Okay, and I've, uh, the street addresses are listed because, um, Oprah wants them, uh, on the bid tabulation whenever they get it, so, but I am just gonna read the, uh, numbers on there just to, um, for privacy. So, one oh one, thirty-nine thousand, eight fifty. One oh two, twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three?
Mm-hmm. One oh three, twenty-four thousand, two hundred. One oh four, thirty-three thousand, nine hundred. One oh five, nineteen thousand, four hundred. One oh six, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred. One oh seven, nineteen thousand, four hundred. One oh eight, twenty-four thousand. One oh nine, thirty thousand, two hundred. One ten, thirty thousand. One eleven, twenty thousand, five hundred.
Twenty thousand.
Five hundred. Uh, one twelve, twenty-seven thousand, nine fifty. One thirteen, thirty-four thousand. One fourteen, twenty-four thousand. One fifteen, nineteen thousand, five hundred. One sixteen, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred. One seventeen, twenty thousand, six hundred. And one eighteen, forty-nine thousand, five hundred. Project one oh one, uh, did require an amended, uh, scope of work, and we did chum that in. Uh, next one, All American General Contracting. They are out of Bedford.
You, you may have stated, uh, Brock Anderson, or did he?
Lynn. Lynn. And All American turned in the application and the non collusion affidavit notarized. 101, fifty-one thousand one forty-four. Okay, and, um, they did not submit the revised, um, scope of work for this property. They turned their, uh, bid in early before the amendment came out. So I do have an email from them that they just want to, um, withdraw that bid since, uh, cause they were going out of town the day that they turned them in, so they were going out of town, so. Um, let's see, she says, we have already turned in our bids for the Bloomfield jobs. Uh, they were turned in this morning. Can I get someone to void out our bid for this job? And just say we're not bidding on it. So I told her that I would just say that I don't wish to bid on that one.
That was just 101?
That was just 101. What the, um, situation was, um, originally, we just, uh, going in there and doing some electrical work, but one of the contractors went and said that the panel really needed to be changed out as well. So, uh, we had the inspector, um, add that to the scope of work. So that one will not be included. Okay, 102, thirty-one thousand six fifty-eight.
Six five eight?
Yes. 103, forty-three thousand two hundred. 104, twenty-three thousand five ninety-five. 105, nineteen thousand nine fifty. 106, thirty-three thousand three hundred thirty. 107, thirteen thousand fifty. Looks like they did not bid on 108. 109, thirty-three thousand three seventy-five. 110, forty-one thousand. 111, thirty-seven thousand two fifty. 112, forty-five thousand four fifty. 113, fifty-one thousand six fifty. 114, forty-one thousand two hundred. 115, nineteen thousand one fifty-one. 116, twenty-nine thousand two two five. 117, twenty-six thousand seven fifty. And they did not bid on 118. Okay, and last one is Katie Minden Hall Carpentries. About the notarized non collusion. The application. 101, forty-one thousand eight ninety. And he submitted the amended scope of work. 102, twenty-three thousand two fifty. 103, twenty-two thousand one fifty-five. 104, twenty-eight thousand seven hundred. 105, seventeen thousand five fifty. 106, thirty-two thousand eight forty. 107, sixteen thousand two ninety-five. Well, I wrote these on the wrong side. Okay, 108, eighteen thousand fifty.
Say that again, please.
Eighteen thousand fifty.
Eighteen fifty, thank you.
Uh-huh. 109, twenty-seven thousand eight fifty-five. 110, thirty-two thousand seven hundred. 111, twenty-one thousand eight hundred. Good luck here. 112, twenty-eight thousand five thirty.
So twenty-eight thousand five thirty?
Yes. 113, thirty-two thousand two hundred. 114, twenty-one thousand four fifty. 115, eighteen thousand one hundred. 116, twenty-four thousand one hundred. 117, seventeen thousand one hundred. And 118, forty-one thousand three twenty-five. So, everybody got multiple bids, so I will not need to do a cost price analysis for anyone. So, uh, what I will do is, um, take them back. Um, we've worked with Katie Minden Hall Carpentry and Brock Anderson, uh, for several years. Um, just started working with All American Construction. Um, I haven't completed a project yet. Um, but the references and everything from, uh, the other project, uh, everything was really good with them. And, um, heard good responses from, uh, people whenever they, can't you look at the houses and everything? So I don't, I don't foresee a problem with any of those three. Uh, and then what I'll do is I'll add up all of the bids, make sure everything added up to what I've read. Um, and so I will have a recommendation for you all then by the seventeenth, um, to award. What I will do then also between this time and the seventeenth, uh, call everyone and, uh, go through their bids. So the maximum that we have is twenty-four thousand two oh five, which, you know, there are several of them that are underneath that amount. So, uh, potentially, we would be able to provide, um, some of the homeowners with additional funds and be able to get everything done, but I'll have to wait and see once I get going through everything. Um, the other thing that has come up, um, with all of this, uh, with the shutdown is the Oprah Funds, which is your main source of the grant funds. Those are available, uh, federal funds, but they've already been fuddled down through the state, so, um, no problems there. Our grant, that S I D C received as your matching funds, that is through USDA rule development, and they are furloughed. And those funds are not available right now. So what we've done in the other community is, you know, instead of getting everything one hundred percent done on a house, um, it may get partially done so that we can get some things done, and the money's flowing and everything. Uh, and we'll, we'll just have to wait till the government opens back up to be able to do the other part, but.
With election day today, it'll open up.
That's what I heard. That's what I heard, maybe tomorrow or Thursday, so, I hope so. Um, so that's, uh, pretty much it, and then I'll be here on the seventeenth. I have a convention for y'all.
Thank you.
Any questions?
The other people, they just didn't put a, a, an in or bid, I guess?
No, so what we, um, do is we advertise for, um, letters of interest from contractors, and everybody submitted, um, a letter of interest. I can tell you Dayton's HVAC, um, has typically been working with All American. Um, and Moro, um, I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know if they act as general contractors, where, you know, if they want to bid on a roof, that kinda thing. Um, and the C G R, uh, they acted like they were interested in it, um, but did not. And Kiriko, he's from Lagode, he's really good, but he's really busy. Um, so I, I guess just not, didn't work out in his timeframe, so.
Where is, uh?
All American?
C G R, where are they from?
Maybe Indianapolis. They're an M B E, um, minority owned business. Um, and they had, uh, submitted a letter that they would be interested. It's either Indianapolis or maybe just a little south of Indy, not much. Um, but yeah, I think they were out of Indy. And All American, uh, they are out of Bedford. I said that earlier.
And where's Kenny from?
Kenny, I'm not sure where, but he's one of them. Um, and so tonight, you guys just need to take them under advisement, um.
And then, and then the seventeenth, they'll be voting then?
Yes, so, um, tonight would just.
Show everyone, they should.
Yeah, Gary needs to abstain at both of them.
We better be here, right?
Yep.
We better be here.
It's fail for them.
Any other questions or anything?
Not for me.
All right.
Thanks for, and you?
You're welcome, and I will see you guys on the seventeenth.
Well, maybe, once we were proven on the seventeenth, how quick then would the construction start?
So then, um, eighteenth through the twenty-first, I'll meet with everybody to sign contracts. And Sonner, if I can, maybe up at the town hall in that back room. Um, so meet with them to do that, and then they can start, what is it, I think the twenty-fourth.
Okay, whatever.
Yeah, whatever, uh.
Okay.
Yep. And then we're asking that they be done, maybe. When I said they'd be done?
Which ones?
These.
I don't remember. I still ask you that.
Uh. The grant ends June thirtieth, so maybe March, April, I think it's March. Maybe, I think is when I was having.
March of twenty-six?
Yes. Yeah. So, hopefully the government will open back up real soon.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Just put up the letter, uh, resignation from Brian Liper. He's designing effect in November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, due to another job, um, offer. He's accepted it, so. Make a motion, we accept his, uh, letter of resignation.
I'll say that, and thank Brian for his relatively short time with us.
Yeah.
Wish him good luck.
Swallow fever, say aye?
Aye.
Post? Three, zero, five. Um, I guess I should ask probably, I guess he's already talked to you, Sonner, about vacation time, comp time and all that stuff? Okay. Get that all squared away, so. All right, the next one, uh, new business here is, uh, have we done any thinking on this? The, about the, uh, alley?
Uh, I have, I have, uh, spoken with one other family. It's, uh, so two out of the four houses, I've been able to find someone there, and I've spoken to them. And both of them are the house closest to where the, uh, where the playground is.
What, the west end?
Yeah, that house, I just spoke with that family about a week ago. And the other ones, I spoke with them probably about a month ago. And both have no problems, that they, the one in, next to the bank, I forget what her name was there, uh.
On the west?
On the south.
South side.
Stall.
Stall, yes. She says she's very, very solid, and she's in a hurry sometimes, she might, cause sometimes she parks her car in the, next to the house, and she zips out that way. Uh, the other one, they, uh, they said they never use it, and then, uh, Monica, Monica somebody. Do you know who that Jason? Anyway.
Talking about the ones over on South Street, they've got two Jeeps. I believe one of them works for the postal service. Is that the house you're talking about right next to the playground?
It, yes, the one right next to it.
Yeah, I know who you're talking about, but name?
There's, and so there's two more houses there, that, there's, uh, the one just east of that, or no, west of that. I'm getting my bird.
Be east.
East, is where Bob Clark lived, I guess his son lived there, and I have not been able to track, track him down. Then the, the third house is where that garage is, where the pickup is parked out there. And the, right, at this point, there's no one living there because it's being.
Is that the one being remodeled?
Being remodeled, yes. And I, I stopped and spoke with the, uh, contractor that's working there, and they, they couldn't tell me who the two gentlemen that were working, and they didn't.
That must be the truck I saw there today then, cause I saw, I, oh, four o'clock or so, I drove, drove around the area, and I saw a truck parked there, that, that garage is.
Okay, yeah. So, if, if we approve this, then, uh, they would still have access into that, uh, to that garage, just coming off of Cleveland Street, and, uh, so, uh.
Well, there, I mean, I guess you guys know the reasoning behind what they're wanting that building and all that closed in, right? Uh, what the reasoning is for?
Uh, my understanding is they're going to build a daycare there, uh, in that facility.
I was talking to Scott about that. I just ran into him one day, done a job at the school, and they have, uh, out of five other schools, they have the great, one thought that was the greatest need for a daycare from zero to three for teachers who have babies who've not been able to get in the daycares anywhere else. So in this area, they got a grants and stuff funded for that, so they were picked and chosen to do that. And if they can close that gap, then it makes sense to me, um, now, I'm not sure, but, um. That's to all of us together, but.
I'm not sure what all is entailed in to have a, either closing the alley up to that certain point. And I walked it off, it's about a hundred and fifty feet is what goes up to where the stakes are that they have run off that the school has run. From the.
Green Street.
Green Street up to where the stakes are, about a hundred and fifty feet. Sam, I don't know, I suppose there's some legal issues that we'd have to do in order to close a portion of an alley that the town owns. And at the same, not only close it, but I guess we would want to either give it, divest, sell it to the school, because they're going to use the property to build this facility on, so.
Or further playground, further to playground across, to attach it, actually the fence to the building.
I have to look at it, but yeah, there's a process for vacating the alley. You have to give notice to any landowners who own property above in the alley, you have to have a public hearing. Is the school going to own property on both sides of it, or? Okay, well, in that case, we vacated it, it would just become owned by the school.
Okay. So would that just, would that just entail us to making a motion to have, to vacate the property in the alley?
If you guys want to, I mean, we can, I can have, there's sort of a petition process, but we could have that. I mean, yeah, I think if the town is doing it itself, you guys, if you want to make a motion to start the process, and I can have the public hearing, and the notice published, and we could have the public hearing in advance of the next month's meeting, if that's when you want to do it. Is the school already on the property?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that create a potential issue if they haven't acquired it yet?
Just a quick question, if they vacate the alley, do they vacate all the way from Green Street to Cleveland, or can they vacate?
You can vacate a portion.
A portion.
I didn't describe exactly what part portion of the alley you're vacating. I would need to, I mean, I'll need to, you know, look at the plan and figure out.
Yeah, we can't, we couldn't vacate it all.
Yeah, that's why I just wanted to clarify.
There's two shares in that.
Do we have, do we have utilities running through the portion that would be vacated?
No, there is lateral lines on it, but the main is out in the middle of Davis Street, so we do not have any utility on the property.
Okay. Whose, whose lateral lines are who do the law?
It's a house that's been torn down years ago, so it was a house the school purchased and had torn down.
Okay, so on price, those lateral lines would serve the property of the school, huh?
Yes. I would actually recommend replacing them because they're all white lines, but.
Sure.
So I would make the, I would make the motion that we initiate the process to vacate approximately a hundred and fifty feet of the alley between Cleveland and Green Street, and to allow Sam to start the legal work to.
So between Cleveland and Green Streets?
Davis, isn't it?
No, it's Cleveland to Green, Davis is to the south of it.
Well, I was thinking between.
From Green Street east approximately a hundred and fifty feet towards Cleveland Street.
Which side of the school is this on?
South.
Green run north and south?
Yes.
So the alley is between Southland Davis and?
No. The alley is between Green and Cleveland, the alley runs east and west.
Right, so Green's right here, but is Green over here then?
Here's Cleveland, here's Green, here's south, here's the school, here's where we're.
Okay.
Here's, here's Green.
Yeah, and then they got the alley goes back behind the house and missions, okay.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Just thought the alley was between those two areas, but. John made a motion to initiate the process.
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Who's in your favor? Okay. Anybody else standing? I don't have any visitors tonight. You guys got any others?
Oh, this is not date for your time off, or my time off, but restrictions?
Is that an update or is that?
That's the original.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, he did not change anything when I had my three-month follow-up.
Okay. He still would need to send us the same type of document with whatever date you were there.
Okay.
Every, any of this already updated. Ten employees, but lying on a couple of tents. We've had one hard application, and as of Friday, we had three through Indy. You might have a couple more, I checked today when I stopped by. One out of Longmont Town. That gentleman's relatively close, he went to W R V. Check with, check with legislature tomorrow. I think there's two from Winfield, one from, a couple from Land.
Okay, I said, when I check, or which Friday, I believe that was.
I didn't consider anybody twenty-five mile further.
I said, this gentleman, I'm not sure where he's from, of course, people move, but John Marshall High School, not sure where that's at.
It was in Indianapolis at one time.
I'm saying, I don't know.
It's not there now, or, not a high school.
And then had a seven-six-five area code phone number, but.
I think she's got a couple, couple more.
What do I close that, what do we need?
Never determined a date, because, like I said, today, we went out and picked up a load and a half, just basically a few people that had leaves wrecked up and ready before they blew out in the road and down in the storm drains, trying to get, make sure there's no hidden issues with the leak machine, the truck, anything. But with the amount of leaves that were still on the trees, that were still green.
They're gonna, they're gonna be a bunch of them coming down from now.
So we can.
Right, I understand that, but I mean, it'd probably be middle of next week at the earliest before we're really picking up leaves harder.
Have you, has John Page contacted you about any, who John Page on South Street? Just two houses down, south of Larry Solon's. There's that trailer, it sits between him and Larry Solon's house, and their driveway, there's a sink, a sinking happening. I think it's something from the drain, waste, not waste, but a sewer drain.
Storm or sandstorm?
Storm, yeah, maybe.
So he hasn't come to talk to me about anything, so.
It's been a while since Apple Festival, he talked to me about it, so. I looked at it, and it looked like something was going on, so. I didn't know if he'd hold it or not, or if it's down there or not, but.
Appreciate you getting, picking out my, we did today, and also the files that I submitted to you, I appreciate you getting on those.
Tomorrow or Thursday, I'm going to dig out Cleveland Street to achieve it.
Great.
But it's. That's, that's a little bit more than a ten or fifteen minute job.
Yeah, I understand, but I appreciate that, but.
We have to, we have to remove the UV bulbs at the West Street Plant, because UV disinfection season's over, and we got to store them for the winter.
And I'm sure you've seen that stop sign that I've put on there.
I'm waiting on the stop signs, I thought I had thirty-inch stop signs, I don't. I'm waiting on hall signs to call me back and tell me I can go pick them up. Like I said, I thought I had twenty-fours and thirty-sixes. It's like twenty-four's a little too small, and thirty-six, just, that'd be hanging out in the road.
Alright, thank you. I assume we got our community crossings paperwork, that all got submitted?
Yes.
I know. In the next couple of weeks, we have to get the LTAP submission completed for funding for twenty twenty-six.
Is that the asset plan? Has to be done by the central person?
The central person.
Alright, everybody.
I'll vote a motion with you.
A second. Dave made a motion adjourned, John seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Three, zero, in favor of adjourned in the meeting.